I'm not saying it's a panacea for all the concerns, but I certainly think it is indicative from the council of a spirit of cooperation and/or coming up with an approach that hopefully will suit all parties. Certainly, I think the best in the next three-day step that we can make, and hopefully they're very successful with their meeting in two days with the Red River Waterway and are on board with this plan, and maybe that speeds up the process. It sounds to me from the lawyers that this could offer some substance for a stay at some point, so all the better. I mean, in the nature of our meeting here, I believe this primarily to discuss the merits of this particular matter. That's what I said.
So, are we only here to talk about the resolution that the council is offering, the two forms?
No, but we are under that. We are under that item on the agenda. You know, there are certain, certainly, the next item on the agenda is the recommendations from the city council, so that can be a little bit broader. But specifically, right now, we are on number four, which is the discussion of the draft resolution. So, I think that, I think that's in queue.
Can, from both sides, can we look at this as a legitimate compromise?
Final compromise?
I think both parties have expressed that this is at least a step in the right direction. I mean, I think that's been stated from both sides.
Right. You know, a step in the right direction, but we need to come to a compromise because, you know, if we keep on stepping in the right direction, it takes months of time. That's right. I mean, you know, this time next year, we're still stepping in the right direction.
Councilman Shine, that's our intention. Our intention was to compromise, to find a way out of this.
Right, that's right.
And whether you amend the current cooperative endeavor agreement and change the wording, word processor, take Hamels and you type in SDO, NAR, or whether we throw that whole thing out and come up with a whole new document, I think that's a matter of semantics. But our purpose and our intent was to offer that as a solution that would address all the mayor's concerns, except the one that I think may be a problem, which is do bills in new decimal. And we can't help with that.
But I think there's some things we don't know. I mean, if this information is going to be given to the Waterway Commission for their meeting on the eighteenth, it would be great if on the eighteenth they made a decision that, you know, we have been followed with moving from Hamels to Stoner. And if they have a decision made on how they're going to disperse the funds, if they're going to take management of the project or not, you know, if they make a decision on both of those, that's great, because on the twentieth, we're forging again with the introduction of this resolution.
We can introduce the resolution.
Anywhere, right? That's right. But what I'm hearing, hearing from the mayor is that if that cooperative endeavor agreement with the Red River Waterway Commission does not change the way the project is managed, then he still may not sign that bill. And so, I guess, I guess that's my question. And Mayor Glover, if you want to answer that straight up, that's fine. If the, if a cooperative endeavor agreement comes back with the Waterway Commission that says, "We're good with Stoner, but we're not going to change the way we fund the project," are we still going to be at Stoner?
And again, I go back, Councilman Corbin, to what I said earlier, and that is, that's the decision that, that we should make between the administration and the council. I've, I've established the basis for my position for that. I'd like to hear you, and I think you guys have established it as well, based upon the comments that you made back in September of 2011, when we had the council discussion about why there was a requirement for, quote-unquote, raw iron sentencing for the Hamels Park location. And that, the belief was that we were getting these from non-City of Shreveport sources, as I understood it to be private sources and what have you. And so, if we're talking about an exposure that wouldn't be beyond that $280,000. From my perspective, I think what we ought to do is to preserve, preserve our relationship with the Waterway Commission. If you guys want to say that we need to do different, then let's talk about that and help me understand why that would be the, the best thing to do, or would make sense to do, in light of the fact that it, it creates a situation where we have further potential exposure than guaranteed that we had, but it creates a scenario. Right now, we know we have no additional exposure based upon the current $1.1 million relationship that we have with the Waterway Commission to do the next phase of improvements at Riverview Park. That's a situation where they're going to identify the professionals, they're going to go out and get those documents, they'll go out for bids, they'll construct it, and then, once it's done, it'll quit playing back to us. That's a good way of doing things. That's the same thing they did with, with the start of Mount Mount, the initial improvements. To me, it makes sense that that would be something that would protect the interests of the city if we were to do it that way. If you guys think differently, then let's have that discussion and go back and forth and come to a consensus and go forward. That's not a reason for that to break down the process. I'm, again, I say I'm here dealing in good faith. I've done this because I'm going to the Waterway Commission based on the fact that now, at the very least, you guys have, there's acknowledgement that we can't go forward at, at Hamels. What I want to do is to resolve this, just as what Councilman Shine has mentioned. Anything that keeps us in a situation where there is a basis for this lawsuit to still exist. And the basis for the lawsuit was the unanimous passage of Resolution 133 that directed a specific cooperative endeavor agreement to be signed. The basis of all of that is not in the best interest for the city. What I'm asking is, is to free us from that particular set of circumstances, so that, as much as I like these guys, as capable as they are, and they are protecting the interests of the city, that we can, can stop that clock and go ahead and get this done. Now, whether we're talking about trust or like, or, we're getting into personalities here. I'm the mayor of the City of Shreveport, you are the duly-elected council. We have an issue to, to resolve that I believe we have the ability to be able to resolve, and that is to, to not try and keep 133 alive up until the very minute that you no longer need it, as the bad set of circumstances that account for us being here. But let's wipe that slate clean, take what I have said, and, and, like the question you did ask, I'll answer those questions. That's what I think. If you guys think it's different, and you will say that in the majority, then I'll live with that. But I think the best interest of the city is to have the relationship continue to go forward the way that it has gone forward. If y'all want to accept that additional responsibility, and, and it probably will be, if it goes beyond $280,000, it probably would have to be another mayor. Because I'd be looking real interestingly at each one of you guys, and I'd pull back that same testimony from September of 2011 and say, you know, Councilman Jenkins, here's what you said. Councilman Fashan, here's what you said with regard to the utilization of City of Shreveport dollars for this Dog Park. It's not consistent with what you guys are about to do now if this number goes over $280,000. If the Waterway Commission does it, we don't have to have that conversation, and we don't face that risk. I think that's a good thing.
A lot of documents have passed back and forth, different plans, different numbers. If we're making a shift to Stoner, and we know the monies that we have available now, including the 10% add-on from the Dog Park lines, are there concerns that that money won't do what needs to be done at a minimum at Stoner? Because I, I guess that's the next thing, is I don't want to forge our way to a point where we can all, you know, get past this, and we're back at, you know, we're $200,000 over budget.
Well, I'll recap just what we discussed in the, the meeting, not last meeting, but prior, with that, was that we discussed estimates of the park at Stoner, and obviously, it's not decided yet, but, uh, these estimates, that would include design and contingency at a total of $298,000. Now, with the River of Waterway Commission funding and Dog Park Alliance funding, and before the first commemorative dog brick or remaining right is sold, that is, what, $200, $308,000?
Yeah, $308,000.
So, $10,000 over the budget of, of what is assumed, and that's including contingencies and designs. So, you know, I think it sounds compelling that this could be done with minimizing the exposure to the city, and certainly, I think that is something that would need to be addressed in any cooperative endeavor agreement that results from this draft legislation. So, I mean, I think that's, that's a general answer. Does anybody remember differently, or have additional facts?
Well, I, I just want to be clear, because Councilman Ruffin, there have been lots of planks, all right? In terms of where we are right now in this process, there are only, there's only one set of planks that, that's relevant at this point, and that's the set of plans that we said to the staff, all right, in an effort to try and resolve this with council. If I were to sign Resolution 133 and we were to take this forward, give me what it is that you would project this project would be, and how much it would cost, in order to be able to do the ordinance that establishes the, the project. That's when they did that, and came back with the $580,000 number. And that's when I sat with groups of you guys and said, "This number is $300,000 more than what's applicable. If I were to sign this, what would you do?" And then, at that point, you guys said to me, again, what I said earlier, that probably some doubters, whether it was our staff, would give us honest numbers based on the fact they would want to give you an inflated number. Can we get some independent numbers? So, we went and did that. Again, one was $640,000, the other was $690,000, both substantially more than what staff projected. My concern about what is, that Jeff just said, is that everything that he just mentioned could find itself in the same set of circumstances that the Hamels location found itself in, and that is, staff and all of their conservatism ends up at one number. And when you actually go out to the private sector to, to, to actually do this, you end up with those numbers being substantially different. In the one case, $60,000 more, in the other case, $110,000 more. Again, those are considerations, as, as I have suggested, don't become City of Shreveport direct problems if the relationship in terms of doing the project mirrors the same one that we previously had with the Waterway Commission's project. Again, I think that's a good thing. If you guys differ, and you're willing to vote that way and stand on that, then, then, you know, let, let, let's go ahead and decide that. I'm saying to you, I don't think that's a good thing, and I think the same set of circumstances could happen, based upon what the staff has preliminarily done. And Tim and Shelley, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you guys said somewhere between $250, $300,000 was the projected cost of a pretty substantial development at Stoner. And if that's absolutely true, then great. But if it's not, then where does the additional expense come from?
And, and I'd like to offer, you know, I know, obviously, we're, we're heading into about an hour, and I know we've all spent a lot of time talking about this, and I'd like to try to move to something forward. If it is the interest of the committee to move forward with the recommendation of this draft resolution, I'd, I'd like to offer that I'd be happy to work with the administration on addressing some of the concerns in a cooperative endeavor agreement, at least discussing what those are and identifying them, and seeing if they're, you know, kind of accounting for what variables might be in there, and further working on that. So, just wanted to sort of mention that as something that we can do in follow-up. I know we may not have the time or the depth to get into it right now at this meeting, but I do think that's something that we can consider, and this resolution being drafted in the way it is, it refers to a cooperative endeavor agreement that obviously is not written yet. So, you know, I think that we can take some of those factors into consideration, and obviously, the discussion of the Red River Waterway Commission at their upcoming meeting will be pertinent to that as well. So, just kind of wanted to move that into...
So, does that mean, excuse me, we're going to be asking for an additional $200,000 or $300,000 from?
No, no, no.
So, does that mean that this, this resolution would be modified once you get with the administration, and there would be some changes in this resolution?
This resolution refers to a cooperative endeavor agreement, and so, you know, that cooperative endeavor agreement hasn't been drafted yet because the Red River Waterway Commission hasn't agreed to it yet, or, you know, there's a number of factors still there. So, what I'm saying is that I'd offer to, you know, go, go beyond the committee and kind of take some extra time to listen to their concerns and see if there's a way that we can address those in something going forward.
Yeah.
In a cooperative...
Can I, can I offer? I, I believe that the committee should give consideration to a form of a resolution, recommending a form of a resolution that repeals Resolution 133. A resolution that repeals 133 without condition of something that has to happen, could be weeks or months from now, frees us up from what it is that accounts for why it is that you've got three cameras and a newspaper reporting here, and that is the lawsuit. And the lawsuit is what is costing the citizens of the City of Shreveport. Anything that does not give us the basis upon which we can do away with the lawsuit only continues to perpetuate this situation and costs the citizens of Shreveport more and more. And, and again, I, I go back to you guys with the idea of, in fact, this, this one sentence here, in the first, "Be it further resolved."
Next lecture, I ask.
No, it's the second, right, it's the second, "Be it further resolved." It says, "Be it further resolved, that Resolution 133 of 2012 is repealed. Said repeal effective immediately upon the signing of a cooperative endeavor agreement authorized herein by all parties." The only purpose of that is to, Mr. Shine, is to continue to perpetuate and drag this thing out, and to drag it off. It, it doesn't resolve. It doesn't allow us to be able to put a bow on this before the end of the new year and to give the citizens of Shreveport a Christmas present, and let them know that their elected leaders have gotten together and resolved this Dog Park issue. Because if you guys repeal 133, we're going to go to the work of the Waterway Commission. We're going to ask them to shift their dollars away from the, uh, uh, Hamels location, to commit to the Stoner location. We've asked them to be open to managing this project in the same way that they have others. If they object to it and don't want to do that, then, then obviously, we can't force them to do so. If the council decides that you all want to keep the liability of the window of cost of this open for the citizens of Shreveport, then, then that's you all's privilege as well. I'm telling you what we think ought to happen in that regard. But if the Waterway Commission doesn't want to do it, and you guys don't want to do it, then, then I can't force, either way. All I can do is do what I'm doing now, and say what it is I believe is best, and give the reasons for why I believe so. But if we repeal Resolution 133 and do so without condition, then we allow this particular issue to go away, and we can move forward. And I'm here before you all as council, I've been before you all as council, in public meetings, before the media, open counseling, whatever. And so, the idea that you want to be able to hold something that is bad in the first place, and that if I were to go and sign it right now, would represent a harm to the city, and none of you would be willing to move forward in advance and do what it is that calls for it to do, and that is to come forward with a capital project to build at the Hamels, then let's go, let's do away with it, guys.
Well, and you're, and just as a reminder to the council members, the mayor's resolution, I believe it's to '12, 2013, is on the agenda already, so that will be on our agenda to be considered on the December 20th meeting. So, just as a recap there.
Well, but let's not just leave it right here. If there's, if you want, if there are some adjustments, some amendments, how do we make that one better? Since it's on the agenda right now, it's eligible for a vote, it doesn't have to hold over until the next year. Let's talk about what the issues and problems are with it.
Well, is there, does anybody have a set of motions or amendments, or any thought?
I'd like to make a motion to, to maybe look at the mayor's resolution and consider maybe some amendments to that resolution.
Is there a second? I mean, I don't know if you need the council, I don't know if you're ready to support that.
She can certainly do that in, you know, meeting in private on your own.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not...
But I'm not...
But it is on the agenda, so, you know, if there are some amendments that you want to, you know, if you want to discuss with other council members about, you know, kind of what amendments might make that more appealing, that's absolutely within your... Right.
Well, the mayor suggested that we do a repeal. So, in listening to you, the repeal is already on the agenda, so why would we go and create another repeal for 133 when it's one on the agenda, right? So, we could just consider, Ray Oliver, doing some amendments to be inclusive of everything or all of the ideas or perception that's been involved in that.
And, and I guess I'll pass that to Julie or Terry. If we incorporate the items we have in this particular resolution into the existing resolution, arguably, it changes it substantially, because the title alone is significantly different enough.
You've learned about the titles since you've been here.
Then we would have to make it a two-reader anyways, wouldn't we?
You authorized making contact as two-liter. What, 212 is a one-liter?
I understand.
And the title of 212 doesn't cover, you'd have to change the title and then lay over it again.
So, I guess, speaking for myself, and I'm happy to make this motion, I would like to make the motion to, at a minimum, introduce this piece of legislation this week, because the crux of this, from my perspective, and I'm not an attorney, is that this is kind of an if-then type of a deal. And to me, what it does is, it ensures the process has every bit of initiative or momentum that it has now to move forward. Where my fear is, the other one kind of terminates that, and not that, not for trust, but trust and verify, and this is kind of more of a, provides verification over time that we are actually moving forward. So, that would be my motion to the committee at this point.
And is there a second? There is one. I'll say. All right.
Discussion?
Yes, there's a second. The, the second was from Councilman Corbin for the super here.
Who's prepared to move forward with 133?
Is that a discussion on this, or is that just a...
Just a discussion on the motions.
Well...
Who, who's prepared to move forward with, with Resolution 133 of 2012? Councilman Corbin's already said that if he knew better, that he knew then what he knew now, he wouldn't have voted for it, so who's prepared to move forward with it now?
But then, remember, I think, I think that's a great question, you know, and you can, and you can, we can continue to talk about 133, but it comes back to what we've said over and over, and we keep reliving these same discussions, and it gets us absolutely nowhere. When we voted on 133, had, we had good information, had administration provided us with information or said, "Hold on, you're, you know, you're going down a bad road here, these, these numbers are all wrong," then we could have discussed that more, but that clearly never happened. Now, the, the other piece of it is, we're trying to move forward with a different site that's agreeable, I believe, to the council, to staff, to the Dog Park Alliance, hopefully it will be agreeable to the Waterway Commission. So, if you want to go sign 133, I told you about two months ago, go sign it and put it on council, we'll deal with it. But I don't think that accomplishes anything. I think that we're much better off if we, if we look at this, if we work with the Waterway Commission, and we move forward for a new location within the Stoner Center allowed, and we get this thing done. That's just my thoughts.
Let me, let me say this. What I understand is that it seems like the mayor is agreeable to everything but holding 133 over his head, am I right?
Correct, correct, for the record.
Right. The bottom line. And what this does is move it from Hamels, Hamels to Stoner, but it also says that we're not going to resolve 133 until you sign the agreement. And the mayor is consistently saying that I'm not going to sign anything that does not delete, that I have to sign, and the suit has not gone away. I mean, that's, that's what I'm understanding.
The Hamels Park agreement, right?
No.
That's what he's saying?
No, no, no.
133, I would...
No, 133, now, let me, let me, I'm, I'm a pretty good communicator, and I did this for a living for 31 years, but maybe, maybe longer than that, so I don't, I don't need, and I love you, but I don't need you interpreting what I'm...
Well, it's important that I understand what you're saying.
Well, wait, well, ask me, I mean, ask me, don't do it.
That's what I'm doing.
No, you're not, you're interpreting what I'm saying, and that's why I'm telling you, just don't do that.
Well, I'm sorry, I meant to ask.
There you go, there you go. Now, we're back, we're back at square one when you say you're sorry. And it seems like we have been at this junction for the last, what, month or so? And, you know, until, you know, until somebody is willing to compromise, Mr. Shine, we're going to be at this junction. Now, you know, I'm not saying, my position is not, who should compromise, but I'm just saying, this is our sticking point. And the mayor has said over and over and over, "I'm not going to sign anything as long as 133 is being held over my head, or 133 is out there." Now, let's, if you make this, if you make 133 and the lawsuit go away, then we're back to discussing what he's going to do. And the other position is, well, you know, man, somebody's got to give. Somebody's got to trust somebody. You know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to get into the trust factor, because, you know, all of this is business. My sister always say, "You trust and you verify." I've lived by it, so, I mean, we got to do something, because if we don't, I mean, this is, this is going to continue, you know, so this is...
That being said, I think it is, you know, we've got a motion and a second on the table. I think this does offer us another option for something to discuss, and what has been expressed as a step forward, and, you know, what we hope to be, something that can provide some resolution. And so, if I could...
Before you? Because I think this is, this is just the kind of discussion, Jeff, that we need, and, and I think Mr. Shine is exactly on point with regard to the need for compromise. And while my belief that we need to do away with 133 is there, and it serves, because that is what gives us the ability to be able to resolve the lawsuit, to be able to say that the basis of the action that Dan and his clients have taken no longer exists because the will of the council is no longer expressed in that way. It allows us to be able to put that issue behind us. Now, Mr. Shine, let me also give you, hopefully, some indication of where my compromise has been. This, this is a situation that, that has arced from, from the summer of last year to now, and, and, and I don't want to rehash, but yes, there are lots of us who are against the idea of spending this amount of money for a Dog Park, when we believe it can be done in other places for less money. And in some instances, there would be no absolute scenario where the city would, would have to expend this dollars. Council is aware of that, we've had that discussion, that's not the desire of the council. The council has 133 going to handle, it's now been established that that cannot happen there. Mr. Corbin is of the belief that it was incumbent upon the administration to provide the council with information for the use of an instrument that we neither offered, supported, or asked to be introduced. Those are questions that should have been offered to the individuals who sponsored in advance, the actual legislation itself, because we said it was a bad idea for lots of various reasons. The one that has us here now is the one that usually ends up ruling out, Mr. Shine, and that's dollars and cents. All the philosophical issues aside, it's, it's dollars and cents at this point.
But it may not be, I mean, and just in reviewing things, I mean, you know, I keep, I do go back to the veto letter of your initial veto, and I mean, these issues weren't brought up then either. I mean, you know, that was your reason for, for not wanting to accept this funding, it developed later, it would appear, because it wasn't listed in that letter.
Well, the full range of issues that I have regarding this situation, cost was a consideration from the very beginning. That's why we're here right now. Philosophically, the utilization of this amount of money for a Dog Park was a part of that consideration. The fact that it was done in the way that it was done, and that is, that you had yourself, Mr. Everson and Mr. Oliver Jenkins, who got with the commission and what have you, going back to the point that Mr. Corbin just asked about, bad information. When Randy Lucky made a request to Tim Washington, April of 2000, of last year, 2012, for the cost, and that's where the $280,000 number came from, with the clarification that this is not the cost. If you want to trace this all the way back, that's it. But now, all of those are, are issues that we can go back and reargue. Like Mr. Shine just mentioned, I'm trying to go forward. And in an effort to go forward, we now understand that the... And in an effort to go forward, we now understand that because of dollars and cents, you can't do Hamels. The interest and desire to go now to Stoner, I am saying, as mayor of the city of Shreveport, okay, let's go do Stoner. All right, but let's do it in a way that stops the clock ticking on this lawsuit, that, that, that puts us in a position to where I can say that, that we are resolving this with you guys.
And, and what's before us now is to add the, uh, this draft resolution to the agenda, which I think provides another opportunity, um, to move forward with the, the Stoner possibility.
What it, what it offers here is it says that this will not happen, that the basis of a lawsuit will not go away until there is the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement. That could take, who knows how long?
That's what I'm saying, that exists, you.
There is not one.
That's what I'm trying to get from here.
But it's, it has been moved and seconded to add it, and, and certainly valid discussion, but, I mean, I would like to kind of keep us a little bit off schedule here where we're an hour and twenty minutes in.
Otherwise, we go back to what, what it is I just said, because it's my intention to see us resolve this thing, Mr. Everson. There is no reason whatsoever as to why this needs to go past Christmas. There is no reason whatsoever as to why the citizens of Shreveport need to suffer their mayor and their council members and a group of citizens fussing over something as ultimately inconce, as inconsequential as a dog park.
You could end it quicker.
But, but here we are, and right, and, and if I were to sign, as Councilman Corbin just, just indicated, that puts it in a lawsuit court and puts you in a position to ultimately come to a direction that says, "What? Give me an indication as to whether that represents a possible scenario at this point as well." So, we, again, let's resolve it. Are you prepared to go forward with the, uh, the dictation of a cooperative endeavor agreement as, as directed in, in, uh, resolution one thirty-three?
I know that's a question that I can answer to, and I'm sure the members would be willing to continue to discuss this, but, uh, right now, I think we do have a motion and a second on the table.
And it's a part of a relevant discussion of that, of that particular motion, I think. And I would ask that, that, that you be willing to offer some feedback, and, 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 since you, you made that suggestion, we, we can do it, do, do it this, this afternoon, let, let's get it, get it signed. Is the council prepared to go forward with it?
Yeah. Um, the reason why I wouldn't be in support of this resolution today is because, based on my understanding, Oliver, there is no cooperative endeavor agreement in place. So, I just, you know, for that reason, I wouldn't, I couldn't.
With this resolution, it calls for there to be a cooperative endeavor agreement. This resolution is step one. Step two would be drafting a new cooperative endeavor agreement that takes, that doesn't include Hamels, it includes, now, Stoner as a site. The Waterway Commission will have the opportunity to make a decision on whether they manage the project or they won't decide to manage the project, and that would be.
And whether they're.
In there.
And.
A new cooperative endeavor agreement. So, step one would be this resolution, step two would be the cooperative endeavor agreement. And once a new cooperative endeavor agreement is agreed upon and executed, then a dog park would actually begin to move forward.
And the other cooperative endeavor agreement goes away?
Correct, goes away. It's cooperative, the old, a cooperative endeavor agreement and the old resolution.
And I would just say, I think the new cooperative endeavor agreement, if it gets to that point, would be essentially the same as the one that we already negotiated with the Waterway Commission, except that Dog Park Alliance would be a party, so they would certainly have some input on it. But, but I don't think it's, you know, reinventing the wheel.
Substantially different, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a long.
Wouldn't be from scratch.
But, but if the Waterway Commission agreed to manage the project, then cooperative endeavor agreement could be amended to include that.
In the name of Hamels to, uh, Stoner. But the lawsuit isn't gonna go away until it's signed, unless y'all take that particular requirement out of the resolution. Right. The proposal is.
Well, and if, if there's a solution to check?
Yes, sir.
There's a solution to check, and that also gives you and the mayor's opportunity to resolve it other way, well, if you think that's gonna work out. I mean, we're really, who's, who's gonna draw first, is where we are now, and I've committed publicly.
We can sign it.
I, I commit publicly, we'll agree to delay if we're getting there. You know, that's something that we already discussed, at least personally I've discussed, I'm, I'm willing to, to delay it so we're not continuing to feed, feed their families with this, that's the problem.
We, we, we're not gonna take this past Christmas, let's sign it.
Well, I don't know that Christmas is the same deadline that everybody has, but, um, but I do know.
But, but let's give the citizens of Shreveport a Christmas present, and let, let's get this resolved, let's sign it.
Well, that's on the agenda, so if, so if that is the will of the council, we certainly will have the opportunity to vote on that. So, I mean, that is on the agenda.
What's on the agenda?
I think what, what Mayor Glover says, he'll sign, he can sign the cooperative endeavor agreement.
Oh, you'll sign the cooperative endeavor agreement?
Now, the only thing that they have to go along, well, right, what needs to go along with that is the actual ordinance to be introduced from the council that creates the project. Who, who, who's gonna offer that?
I mean, so legitimately, I'm just procedurally asking this question. If a council member was to write, introduce a piece of li, legislation that had a capital project to create a dog park at Hamels with capital funding of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, funded with a source of Red River Waterway funds in accordance with a cooperative endeavor agreement, okay, that's all legitimate at that point? Then we would put a scope out for the scope of the project and see if a public bid came out with a number that was less than two hundred and eighty thousand dollars? And if it didn't get to two hundred and ninety, eighty thousand dollars, they couldn't get a bid low enough, we'd either have to change the scope of our project, or, uh, we would dissolve the capital project.
Now, you, you've already had that question asked and answered in executive session, so let's get a chance to answer it in the public. Uh, because it, I think Tim and Sheldon answered that question?
With the budget, and it is over the budget, we can, we can reject the bids.
Okay, so conceivably that is one option, now I'm not saying that's the desired option.
Change the scope, there are two options, you either change the scope or reject the bids.
But now, what we have asked, going back to when we came up with the scale and scope of the project, was if there's a different version of a dog park to be done at Hamels, other than what the staff has come up with, and one that comes in at the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar, uh, price range, uh, show it to us, 'cause we haven't been able to develop. And, and nobody has come to us with that option, nobody has stepped forward and said that we will do that, which is why it is that the dog park folks have now decided to switch from Hamels to Stoner. And so my question still is, where is the projected project at Hamels for a dog park of whatever the price range?
Could this be amended to include a projected?
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's on the, uh, agenda, it can be amended.
To include the actual cost or whatever, whatever.
Do they have projected costs to do on a Stoner?
I mean, we, we're, we're here with this resolution before because when we, when we presented to you guys the information of the staff's projected cost, as well as the two independent projected, uh, cost of a Hamels location, they were hundreds of thousands of dollars more than the two hundred and eighty. None of you all came back and said, "Let's do a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar, uh, uh, project at Hamels." Uh, and the staff said that you cannot effectively do a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar project. What I'm asking is, who's gonna give us the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar project at, at Hamels, and let's go sign this thing?
Okay, let me just say, I've got, I made a motion, I think I have a second, I don't know if we require a vote, but I do have another commitment today.
I do as well.
And, and I'm sorry I didn't give enough window for this, but if you're looking for us to vote on something today, I would like to be present for the one that I made a motion for.
I'd like to go ahead and just call for that vote quickly, and then we can continue after that, but, um, if we could, the motion before us is a motion to introduce, um, the draft resolutions included in the packet, uh, for the December twentieth meeting. On the paper? Any opposed? And, uh, see, there's no extensions, so that passes to be introduced. Um, now, we do have, uh, the opportunity now for public comments. Um, do we have anybody, um, who's interested in public comments today?
We might have some news media people who might wanna, wanna be on the news too.
Then what?
Oh, no, no.
Give the news a Christmas present.
Since I consider myself, absolutely, I consider myself to be a, a part of the public. I, I, I'll go ahead again and restate, uh, for the record, what is, I've said from the beginning. We're here right now because of the fact that one thirty-three is based upon paths with bad, inaccurate, incorrect information that you guys as the councils accepted, stood on, yielded to, because you've got Dan and, and, and his cohorts are some good people who are very effective at, uh, going out and lobbying their government. We still have the duty and obligations to make decisions down here based upon good, accurate, truthful information. One thirty-three is not. All of the other issues and arguments philosophically and what have you bring us to a point that one thirty-three was passed, it was passed as a directive, a directive directs me as mayor to sign a cooperative endeavor agreement that would cause great substantial financial exposure to the city of Shreveport, above and beyond the dollars that are being made available. It is that realization detailed by the cost of the project, the staff did, as well as the two independent projections, one for six hundred and forty thousand, the other for six hundred and ninety thousand, that counts for ideas that the conversation has shifted from Hamels now to Stoner. What we're saying to you guys is, let's be done with this. Let's acknowledge the fact that we need to come together, meet and compromise, focus on Stoner, go to the Waterway Commission, ask them to redirect the dollars. If you guys don't think that they should be the ones that manage the project, let's have that discussion. They don't wanna do it, fine. All right, it's also called for by, well, this is for the dog park folks to make an application for a Stoner location as well. And for us to move forward based on that. Not to sit here and hold, "Well, we voted all of forward, we voted forward, now I gotta hold to it." Councilman Corbin's holding me responsible for giving him information for which he ought to be providing or asking other folks, or asking him to vote for something. But the fact that I'm against it, he's not gonna blame me for giving him bad information, so he didn't make the right vote. Not smart. Well, that makes sense, I, I, and I'll wrap up here in just a second. We're here because of that bad information. What we're suggesting to you is, let's move in another direction. Resolution two twelve gives us the option to be able to do that. This one would as well, if you delete, uh, said repeal to be effective immediately upon the signing of a cooperative endeavor agreement authorized hereby and by all parties. You all acknowledge that one thirty-three needs to be repealed. You just wanna sit here and, 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 I guess, appease Dan, uh, and, and his clients by trying to hold that one little last caveat, guys. Let's move past this and go forward. Otherwise, as I said, the other option that's available to me individually as mayor is to sign one thirty-three. That ends the lawsuit. And allows us to be able to put this issue to bed, but as Councilman Corbin just said, well, give it to us, we'll, we'll take it. If you're gonna say that, show me how, as I just asked. Show me how we do a dog park at the Hamels location, either for two hundred and eighty thousand, or where are you going to find the additional dollars necessary to do it? In the months since you and I have had that conversation, Mr. Everson, Mr. Corbin, Mr. Oliver Jenkins, rest of the council, nobody's done that.
Well, I think, um, in, in one regard, um, obviously, we have moved forward with a different approach since that initial conversation. Secondly, I think, you know, you stated several times about, um, being done with this, and I think that in large part expresses the concern of a lot of people is that with the passage of two twelve, you're done with this. Like, you, you know, I, I think that, that equal done to you, um, is, is the worry that we're hearing from some, some parts, you know. And so, certainly, I wanna express appreciation for your, uh, your letter to the Red River Waterway Commission. I think that shows us on a good faith that you've been moving forward in that respect. And I think that is, I wanna say this very publicly, that's appreciated. So, um, look forward to hearing, you know, the comments from the Red River Waterway Commission. Um, but, uh, but I think unless we have any other public comments right now, I think I'd like to call the meeting adjourned.
The meeting, yeah.
Oh, five one thirty-three.